Seven PM, I will call the Common Council Meeting to order. I have a roll call. Laurie?
Certainly. Mr. Schrader?
Here.
Mrs. Schatzinger?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Gallops?
Here.
Mrs. Kane?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Mr. Wirtch? Mr. Split?
Here.
We have a quorum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reading from the forty-sixth Psalm. Come, behold, the works of the Lord; see what desolations he has brought on the earth. He makes wars cease to the end of the earth. He breaks the bow and shatters the spear; he burns the shields with fire. Be still, and know that I am God; I am exalted among the nations, I am exalted in the earth. The Lord of hosts is with us; the God of Jacob is our refuge. We pray. Almighty and eternal God be present with us this evening. Inspire our thoughts and our minds to serve you and our communities in everything that we do. We pray in your son's name. Amen.
Right. First order of business, may I get a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda?
I'm motioning the approval of tonight's agenda.
Second?
Moved by Ben, seconded by Paige. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The agenda is approved. Next, we'll open up for public comment. This is the opportunity for citizens to come before the council with comments and concerns on any current city issue, knowing no action may be taken tonight. I ask that you keep it civil and respectful, and within five minutes. However, discussion of personnel or individual members of the Common Council shall not be permitted. I expect you to be respectful, and in return, I expect the council to treat the citizens with the same respect. Before you begin, please state your name and your address for the record. Thank you. Tonight, we only have one, and that is Doug Iverson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to address the council on the subject of the dispatch center. I would have to say, it doesn't matter what you guys vote today, but come budget time, there's no way you could possibly pay for this dispatch center. It's not just the ongoing tech costs that are going to hurt the city, but it's the increase of number of personnel that you would be required to have for the dispatch center to operate 24/7. You can't push it off onto the county because you guys want to keep it. That personnel cost, you're going to actually have to hire far more people than what we have now. I don't see where you're going to find that in the budget. It's already very tight. You can't borrow the money, because you can't do that forever. You'll have to take it off maybe street repair and pay back for the levy. You can't referendate it, it's too late, plus it's really expensive, even for just every 10 years. That's way more than we paid for Boca over 24 years. So you either, you have to borrow it from the streets, take it off the streets, or you have to, in fact, take it off the operational side, which means other people would lose their jobs so we can have a dispatch center. You have to have fully trained dispatch. You can't just have people walk off the street and give them a few weeks' training. To escape that legal liability if something were to happen, you have to have certain things done. And I don't believe this city can do that. The county can actually dispatch for every single square inch of the county. They could do Ripon, too. And they'll have more people, better trained, and they have a backup center, too. So, go ahead and vote to keep it. You can't keep it. You have no money to do that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
You. All right. Moving on, we will conduct a public hearing for the proposed application for the Community Development Block Grant Close of Public Facilities. The time is now 7:05. I will call a public hearing open. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dave, who is joining us by telephone. Dave?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Just got to go through a few things before we accept some public comment. As some of you may be aware, we did this public hearing last April for the Community Development Block Grant for Public Facilities. We submitted an application in May of last year for the Vermont Street and Parkway Terrace project. We were awarded those funds, but every time we applied, we had to go through this process. So I'll quickly go through that. The CDBG program, Community Development Block Grant program, has been around since the mid-'70s. It's a program that is administered, federal dollars administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And for those last probably 10 years now, the Department of Administration at the state level administers those funds to communities. And each year, they get an allocation of funds for the CDBG housing program, for planning, for public facilities, for economic development, and then also for public facilities for economic development. And then another program that was rolled out a couple of years ago was the CDBG Close Program. Now, I'll get a little bit into that a little bit more, but... So the types of activities that are used under the housing program, we have housing rehab for low-to-moderate-income owners. We have housing rehab for renters, for landlords that rent to low-to-moderate-income households. Also, low-to-moderate-income households can apply for homebuyer assistance. These programs, the housing programs, are typically done through the consortium, which is in that area. I'm not sure what the consortium is that runs the program, but those dollars would be available through that consortium. The planning program does have funds available to do comprehensive plans, do capital improvements plans, to do site-specific plans, and so forth. The Public Facilities program, which many of you should be familiar with, that's the program that we applied for last year for Vermont Street and Parkway Terrace. That was a million-dollar grant that we received in August. We made the application in June, and we're award those funds. And so, you should be familiar with that program. They also have Economic Development Program, which is, basically, that program is the program that funded your economic development revolving loan fund, and which is now turning into the Close Funds. The Economic Development, the CDBG Economic Development Program before was a loan. It was a grant to the community, and they loaned it to businesses. As those businesses paid back, the city would create this revolving loan fund. Okay? Again, a couple of years ago, HUD came through and said statewide, there's about $100 million of funds sitting in these revolving loan funds that communities have, and they're not revolving. You know? And so, what HUD said is they told the Department of Administration on the state level to, you've got to develop a program to use those funds and extend those funds. And so, that's how the Close Program, you know, was instituted two years ago. Now, they still have, you know, the Department of Administration still has the CDBG Economic Development Program, but now, instead of it being a revolving loan fund, it's a grant to the community. And then, the community loaned that money to a business for creating jobs for low-to-moderate income persons. And if they meet those criteria, then it's a forgivable loan to that company. So there's no payback on that. So basically, they'll receive a grant if they create those jobs and so forth. They have the Public Facilities for Economic Development. That's a grant program to the community. If you were looking at a business that was expanding in your industrial park and you needed to provide, you know, streets, water, sewers, stations, and so forth, you could honestly get a grant for that. Again, that's dependent on that business creating jobs for low-to-moderate-income persons. And so that's one way that you could fund those infrastructure improvements if that was needed. And then, we have the revolving loan fund or the Close Funds. Again, the city has approximately $552,000 available. What we're, what we have to do is go to pay that back to the DOA and then apply for those funds, and that's what we'll, there's other agenda items on the tonight's Board of Council Action regarding that. So that's basically the programs that are available by the CDBG. What we're looking at in this application tonight that the council is taking action on is we're going to go apply that $552,000 of CDBG Close Funds towards the construction of the Senior Center. And this has been, you know, talked about last year and so forth. We're combining that with the $500,000 of the Mitchell gift that the city received. And then, the city is coming up with another 500. We're estimating about $1.6 million on this project, or about $1.55 million. So, that's the project that we're looking at. That's the CDBG program in general, and I guess I'll just open it up for any public comments as it is a public hearing on the use of those funds.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Is there any public comment? Once again, is there any public comment? And last time, is there any public comment? Dave, do you have any other points before we close the hearing?
Uh, no, I don't, Mayor, but I'll talk a little bit more about the project when we get to the decelerating resolution, if you don't mind.
Very good. At this time, it is 7:12. I will close the public hearing, and we will move on to the first action item, which is the resolution authorizing submission of the CDBG Close for Public Facilities application. Dave, would you like to start us off on the resolution?
Yeah. Again, we have to, the city has to pay these funds back, and Laurie's working on doing that, and we are making an application. The application has to be submitted by January 31st for this. The total project cost, we're estimating at $1,578,000, of which we're going to use the $552,000, a little over $552,000 of the CDBG Close Funds that's definitely made for the city of Ripon. And the other funding is going to be a combination of $500,000 from the Mitchell gift, and then also some local funds, which are, we have another resolution regarding that. Again, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. We, you know, this is for the Senior Center in Murray Park. We are also looking at, you know, again, the city has to come up with $525,000, a little over $525,000 as match. This is based on estimates that we have done. We're also looking at, we have submitted a stewardship grant application for a share of this. So this is the Senior Center portion of the facility that we put some, you know, floor plan together. We also will be looking at, you know, asking stewardship again this fall, or this April, to submit an application for that. Our application was, was not funded last year, but the honor did encourage us to apply again, because there are going to be more funds available this year under the Trail Program, which, and, you know, the facility that we were looking at in Murray Park would be kind of a combination, but again, the CDBG Close only funds the Senior Center. We have designed some restrooms and some houses out of the area for the Trailhead Facility, which will hopefully be funded by the stewardship fund.
All right. Thank you.
Any questions on the application or anything like that?
Billie?
A question on what does the process look like going forward as far as if this were to be approved? Giving us updates on the plans, what the facility will look like, and providing and allowing for input as a project goes along? What does that process look like?
Yeah. Well, again, this, the $552,000 that we're applying for are the CDBG Close Funds. Those are funds allocated to the city of Ripon. So, we're 99% sure that you're going to get those funds back. Then the next step in the process would be to, once the CDBG Close Award is made, we have to get a grant agreement signed with the state. Then the next step would be to procure services of architects to design the facility. Right now, at this point in time, we only have, you know, kind of a floor plan and a cost estimate. We didn't want to go into plans and that, and, you know, until we knew that we had all of the funding sources put together. Okay? So, that would be the next step after this award is made. And we would have, you know, input into that at that time for the Senior Center and for the Trailhead Facility as well.
And forgive me for being newer, again, to council and not being here when the original conversation was had, but being that this, with the grant program that we're using, and it was often mentioned that low-to-middle-income, you know, resources are being provided, or they're looking, it seems that that's being prioritized by funds for this. At what point is it appropriate to think about bringing in ideas and partners? You know, I know at some point, again, I don't mean this to be a long conversation here, but providing an area for, you know, children to be with the Senior Center or other programming. Does it, is it helpful to have specific programming ideas as you write up this grant as to how this can impact our wider communities with specifics to our low-income, middle-income?
You know, that's a very good question, and I thank you for breaking that up. Again, the CDBG program has the benefit of low-to-moderate-income persons, okay? However, persons age 62 and over are considered low-to-moderate income. They're called limited clientele according to the CDBG rules and so forth. So the programming that we have for the Senior Center has to be for senior centers. The programming for them has to be for seniors 62, age 62 and over, okay? It's not to say that you won't be able to, you know, have kids come into, you know, the programming and that for coming, coming into the Senior Center and, you know, participating with the seniors and, you know, networking with the seniors and so forth. But the programming itself has to be for persons 62 and over. So, that's, that's a function of the operation of the Senior Centers for, you know, or the Senior Citizen Center. So there could be, you know, you know, there could be discussions regarding, once we have this in place, what kind of programs are going to be involved.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Who to approve the resolution?
Second.
It's been moved by Al, seconded by Howard. Any further discussion on the resolution? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the resolution to authorize submission of the CDBG Close for Public Facilities application, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. And then, next, we have a resolution providing a guarantee of matching funds for the CDBG Close for Public Facilities program. Dave, back to you.
Yeah. Again, I mentioned that we are looking at, you know, a total project cost of $1,578,000. We have $552,000 through the CDBG Close Program, and we have a $500,000 gift from the Mitchells that to go toward the building of some type. This Senior Center is located in Murray Park so that we can hopefully, you know, combine, you know, the park facility and so forth with the, you know, Senior Center and that, and have space for, you know, outdoor programming for the Senior Center as well. And again, we will be looking at getting some funds, hopefully getting some funds through the stewardship program as well that would be geared towards the Trailhead Facility of this building. So, we do have to come up with some matching funds that, you know, that share that's not covered by the CDBG and not covered by the gift, which, again, would be about, you know, $525,000.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this resolution?
Who to approve the resolution?
Seconded. Moved by Al. I heard Ben first, and seconded by Ben. Any further discussion on this resolution? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the resolution providing guaranteed matching funds for the CDBG Close for Public Facilities application, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else that you need from me tonight?
I believe that's all we needed your assistance with.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Just got to take care.
You, too. You. All right. Moving on. Next action item is the reconsideration of the consolidation of the Dispatch Center with Fond du Lac County. Who would like to start the discussion?
Well, we need a motion first.
Oh. We need a motion by someone who voted in the majority. And the motion will be to determine whether we reconsider the decision to keep the Dispatch Center in Ripon. And that's the first motion that we're going to vote on before we move on to another motion. So we have to put it back on the table.
So the motion is just to start discussions?
Correct. To move to reconsider. So we've got to start with the motion to reconsider, which has to be at the last meeting or at the next regular scheduled meeting, which is this evening. So someone in the majority must move that. The seconder can be from anyone.
Is there a motion to reconsider? Jim? Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Jim, seconded, I heard Paige first, so seconded by Paige.
Now we take a roll call vote on that motion.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Mrs. Schatzinger?
Aye.
Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Mr. Gallops?
Aye.
Mrs. Kane?
Aye.
Mr. Morrison?
Aye.
Mr. Wirtch? Mr. Split?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
You. Would we like to start with discussion, or is there a motion to start with?
I can start if you'd like, Mayor.
Go ahead.
We've been having a discussion over the last two weeks that probably should have happened before the last meeting. There's been discussions, I've been very impressed with the citizens of Ripon and how they've stepped forward in the last two weeks. I believe we've all received emails, some just to me, some to others as well, regarding the citizens' input in this and, for lack of a better term, the ownership they've taken in this situation and the research they've done. My no vote, they should have been quantified more at the last meeting, so that I apologize when they say that. But I don't believe we were ready at that time to vote. I believe there was still a lot of misinformation in society, like I said, at the last meeting. Some of that has been clarified. I know there was a joint meeting last Wednesday with the party of the fall that was very destructive, in my opinion. And I think we really need to understand what we were going into. I don't think the citizens understood it, but I think that information has gotten out better now, and I think we have a more informed choice to make tonight than we did to the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. Al?
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Wirtch for putting, keeping this on the agenda at the last meeting. I think it was important. When, when you talk to people about why you voted one way or another, you need to have the facts. Need to have accurate facts and facts that can be supported with evidence, with data, with everything. And as Mr. Wirtch said, I also did not feel comfortable in voting or moving center because we did not have the facts. We got information late. There was information after the meeting, but we have been able to get good information now that we can utilize to make the very best decision that we can for this community. And I sincerely apologize for not asking those questions sooner. I should have known to do so, but I didn't do it. And so... People need to understand that.
Thank you.
So now, obviously, it's time to continue to ask some questions.
Yes. Discussion's open.
I know that the topic of liability has come up a number of times related to this. Could, could we have some perhaps more information as to what is meant by how, if we, if we were to continue to keep our dispatch here, what that means, liability? Perhaps I'd like to hear from our administrator of our dispatch center, what that means, perhaps, our attorney, and those who've, I think, to get some clarification on what the liability aspects might be important in this conversation.
Would you like to start?
I can start briefly. Obviously, liability is always concerned with any municipal endeavor, and it's addressed, obviously, number one, through your insurance carrier to make sure that you have coverage for certain events. In this type of case, I'm sure that the liability that we're talking about is a standard of care, state-of-the-art responsibility that falls on the municipality. That's what you're going to be held to the standard to prove that you were negligent or knowingly failed to meet the standard that's required. And so, as I understand it, if we were not to move the center, we would have to address that additional liability because it becomes a dispatch, excuse me, basically, a call center as opposed to a dispatch center, increasing the liability in terms of responding to calls that then are directed our way because of the 911 technology. We would be receiving more than those calls that we're currently receiving, and we need to have the training, the expertise, and the systems in place to obvi- to have the training, the expertise, and the systems in place to obviously be able to defend against an action that we were negligent or failed to comply to a standard. You know, as everybody understands, you can sue for almost anything. Now, there's some limits to liability for municipalities, which is relevant. But if our conduct was determined to be gross or willful, then there's another argument that can be made that we fall outside of those standards. So it's very important when you take on any municipal endeavor that you consider the liability considerations.
Thank you so much, Wirtz, for sharing that. And as you said, it seems that people can sue for anything these days. So as I understand it, keeping our, what will become then, as you call it, a call center, if we choose to keep that here, I mean, the limits to what someone could sue us for, I mean, that, the prices of...
The door opens further, again.
Wow.
Addressed by making sure you have proper insurance and making you have the proper processes and standard of care, essentially.
Do you have more to add to that, Chief?
No, I think City Attorney Wirtz explained that very well. I guess if I can indulge you for a few minutes here of your time, I do have some remarks that I just want to make. Every time I think I've said enough on this topic and given you the information that I can, I think there's, I find that there's more to say. First, let me express that this discussion, once again, has nothing to do with our current communications officers and dispatchers and their work performance. They continue to work hard to do what is best for departments and the community with the resources they have. They should be commended for their work through this continued discussion. They are professionals, and to suggest anything else is inappropriate and uncalled for. This conversation on the future of the dispatch center is not easy. I've made some mistakes during this process. As a young police officer, I made mistakes and learned from them. And as a new police chief, I've made some mistakes and will learn from them as well. This process has taught me some very valuable lessons. Lesson number one, the first lesson I learned was to stay in my lane. Let each chief address the needs of their own department, although I'm responsible for the overall function of the dispatch center, and with that comes involvement in certain operations of each of the emergency responder departments, I will let those chiefs speak for themselves in their departments. Chief Teachout will answer your questions on his operations. I should not and will not do that again. I believe each chief has the best interests of their people and their departments in mind when they talk to you, and I will state that I've had the opportunity to work with the ambulance service and fire departments in this community for the past 30 years. I was a member of the EMS department. Regardless of what's been said, I do respect the work that they do and the people that do it. John was right to compliment those EMTs on their work and their commitment to this community. Just as I stated that this was not about the quality of the work our dispatchers do, it's not, it's also not a criticism of the work that the EMTs do either. This is a discussion on the future of the emergency response in this community. Lesson number two, there's a time when I need to be more careful about the words I speak or the information I write, and a time, quite frankly, to keep my mouth shut. I refer you back to lesson number one. There's also a time when I can't do that, and I need to speak up. Now is that time. I've tried to stay very neutral on this topic during these public meetings for many reasons, but there comes a time when you have to be willing to speak up and make the record known your position on certain topics. Now is that time. As I said, this has not been an easy discussion. I realize that there's a potential that four of my employees will be losing their jobs as a result of this conversation. I definitely have personal commitments to them for what they have done for me, our department, and the community. They have families, and it's not been easy to try and speak my opinion on this matter with their futures involved. But now is that time. We are currently able to provide emergency response calls for the city of Ripon and the surrounding areas. My comments here should not be interpreted as a panic that we're unable to do that. We are able to function, and no one is in any jeopardy of not having emergency response if needed as we debate this issue tonight. But the truth of the matter is that we have functioned in a process of just getting by for some time. There comes a time when just getting by is simply not good enough. When questions are asked about why upgrades on certain equipment have not been done or this issue has not been addressed, I pause and remind you that we have all sat in the same room during budget time, discussing how to pay for this or that, discussions whether to add $20 to the co-pay of employees' health insurance to pay for an additional item, how to find an extra $500 or $1,000 to fund this item or that one. We continually address needs as we can within the budget restraints that we are all very much aware of. We are the stewards of the taxpayer money that they give us the privilege of utilizing. The issues we face now did not happen overnight. They are a culmination of years of just trying to get by. We cannot do that anymore. I can't allow that to happen anymore. Now is the time. We can pick away at every little aspect of this issue and say, how are we going to find $160,000 here to pay for this or another $50,000 to pay for that? But in my opinion, this conversation is about overall organizational quality that needs to be addressed. Our citizens deserve that, and they expect that. Every organization should continue to seek improvement. If we do not seek improvement, then we are setting ourselves up to fail. And in our line of business, folks, that failure could be catastrophic. It could be catastrophic for our employees, our first responders, our citizens, and those seeking help in their most dire situation. In our business, we can't have bad days. We cannot just get by anymore. There is a time when being good is just not good enough. We should strive for excellence. I believe that when the decision was made to join the consolid, was made not to join the consolidation of dispatch many years ago, that was the right decision at that time. However, now is the time. We have two choices before you. Either choice has significant implications on how we do business, and both will be painful, as change always is. We can stay operational in our current system, but make no mistake, if we stay, there will be significant changes in how we operate. There will be changes in operations, processes, training, technology, and personnel. We will, in essence, be looking at changing our entire operation and beginning the organizational quality overhaul that is desperately needed. This choice has significant financial, organizational, and liability implications for this community. A strain on other departments' budgets and services across the community are sure to be impacted. There simply is no other way to say it. The financial implications of retaining this dispatch center will change the entire way that this community is able to do business in the future. The other option is to look at consolidation with a proven system that has shown to be efficient, effective, professional, and dispatches all police, fire, and EMS services for the other 33 municipalities in this county, with the exception of one, the city of Ripon. You have been given responses from other chiefs across the county that have articulated to you their experience with the Fond du Lac County Dispatch Center. Not a one of them have indicated an unwillingness of the county to work with them, be responsive to issues, or that they are unhappy in any way about the service they receive. The county simply has the ability to function, provide funding, provide training, provide personnel, provide resources at a level that we have struggled. When I look at where we're currently at, we are here. When I look at the county, is that with their dispatching services, they are here. We are not even close to offering the services that the, that they are currently offering and have been able to offer for some time at the county level. Smart 911, GPS call locating for 911 calls, texting emergency information. They already do, they are already doing things that we are incapable of doing. I'm concerned about our, about our ability to close that gap and provide any resemblance of the same service that Fond du Lac County currently offers, offers to our community. Across the nation, 70% of all emergency calls received by communication centers are coming from cell phone callers. In Fond du Lac County, that number is 80%. 80% of all calls going for emergency services are cell phone callers. We are currently not capable of receiving cell phone calls. Fond du Lac County has invested millions of dollars in communications upgrades, is investigating, investing another $2 million in CAD and RMS software, $750,000 in radio frequency improvements, spreading that cost to taxpayers across this entire county, including the taxpayers in the city of Ripon. Meanwhile, we are questioning how we're going to afford a $165,000 piece of equipment and be able to fund that again in another six years. That one piece of equipment for a center with operational needs for upgrade. Now is the time. I never thought I would be the guy standing in front of you asking you, for you to consider this transfer. When I was a patrol officer 15 years ago, when they told me they were putting a computer in my squad car, I was like, hell no. I did not want anything to do with that. Things change. Technology has changed in how we do our job. We must change. We must adapt to new thinking or face the organizational issues citywide that come with non-action. Now is the time. We'll need to work together with the county and they with us as we find solutions to our specific issues. With that, we need to be mindful that in a transition like this, the work is just beginning. Believe it or not, the decision of to go or not go may be the easiest part of this. But if we can have mutual respect between the stakeholders, be respected partners, and willing to give changes a chance with an open mind, making adjustments and analyzing them as we go, we can have a successful transition. My responsibility for, is the safety of this community, not just patrolling streets or arresting bad guys, but to protect this community from unnecessary risk and liability as the chief of this organization. I owe it to our organization, the community, and the taxpayer, taxpayer to make the best decision I can for this community. I believe the choice is clear. The appropriate decision is to utilize the communication services from the Fond du Lac County Communication Center for our emergency communications needs. Now is the time. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I think you answered all my questions. Does anyone else have questions for the chief?
I want to thank you for, I mean, you are the administrator, you're not only our police chief, but the administrator of our dispatch center.
I am, but I just want to say that I've had the privilege of working with two other chiefs that also have a voice in that administration. Ultimately, I'm responsible for what happens there, but make no mistake about it, they have input into our dispatch decisions and the, and the processes that we use. So I just want to say that that's a very important aspect of what we do.
So it underlines more for me about how much weight that opinion that you share with us has. And I admire that you were able to share that with us tonight. I know it wasn't easy. If, if the decision is made to move to the county to dispatch, to merge, again, with the county that we are in, I, I do like to remind us, I'm so proud that, that Ripon is a part of Fond du Lac and, and Fond du Lac has provided, you know, in many ways, the county, there's lots of services that we use. So it's not an outside organization that we're going to. We are already a part of Fond du Lac County. We're familiar with them. What does this look like? If anyone has questions about how, I know it's in all of our hearts to take care of our current dispatchers, again, to underscore how important they are to this city, what is the severance package? At what point do we think about that? Now, I understand maybe that's not discussed in details until after a vote is made. However, for those thinking, hey, how is everyone thinking about their well-being? This is a very big decision we're about to make. It seems that it does make sense to, to put in the public, that I know all of us, we've, we've talked about in the past, that we have a plan in place to be able to provide a severance package, to be able to provide support for those individuals. And I think that perhaps this is a time to, to talk about it so that they know we're not making a decision without not keeping their, their lives at the forefront.
Certainly, the general topic can be broached in the sense that the council has some desire, but you can't get into the specifics. That's something that would need to be done in closed session to talk about compensation package of individual people, and there are individual people affected. So that would not be in a public forum. But, you know, I would note your comment. I think, obviously, everybody here appreciates that if the decision is made to move to Fond du Lac County. But this is not the time or place.
Thank you for, for explaining that further. And I guess I maybe, again, I know I can't speak for all of us, but I do know that as a group, we have talked about how we can help provide support for that group. And so for the public listening, I want them to know that we're not making this decision without keeping their lives at the, at the forefront. And again, I don't mean to speak for all of us, but I think that we have thought about that.
As I stated at the last meeting, I have worked with our city administrator to put the framework together for a severance package for any employee that will be affected by a decision in the event that the dispatch center does move and transition to Fond du Lac County. And if that decision is made tonight, I will strongly request later in the meeting that it be placed in a closed session agenda item on February 9th meeting. Yes.
Understood. Al? Any more discussion? Questions?
I just need to know how much it's going to cost the city of Ripon to put together a ambulance crew, what those shifts would look like, what the cost to the city would be to have the hourly wages added on to us, the insurance added on, as well as the cost of new ambulances. I know Mr. Teachout is here, maybe he can touch on it. Just some questions I think the public would need to hear. Or some answers, I'm sorry. Just from what I'm seeing, I, I think we would, we would have to take on a lot of crews. You're talking two per. Maybe I'm wrong, Mr. Teachout. But if we did the cheapest, just by the numbers that I'm looking at, you're talking an additional almost $500,000 a year just in employees on full-time for ambulance crews. And I'm trying to figure out how we're going to come up with that. If I'm wrong, please tell me.
Before I answer your question, Ben, I just want to talk about a little bit of history with what's happened. Alderman Wirtz very correctly identified, a lot of work's been done over the past couple of weeks. There's been a, I attended a meeting in which a number of suggestions were made in an effort to get us out the door. We cannot, I've been told that Fond du Lac County, the way we do things now, which is unique, Fond du Lac County can't help us out with the way we do things now. They have promised that they will do everything in their power to help us with that, to make the changes we need to make, and have made some suggestions about how to do that with our agency specific. I've looked at those suggestions. We talked further. They're under consideration. Fortunately, we believe we have a little time before we would, the switch would be pulled and we'd be taken over to the county. So one of the suggestions was, let's try to test some of these new policies or procedures and make sure they're going to work for us before we throw the switch. That's possible to do, I believe, with our current dispatch center. If we're only offered a couple of page tones, we can test that with our dispatch center. My concern is that, and I know it's very difficult to explain, but my concern is that with only two or even three page tones, the wrong people are going to be responding to the call, or nobody's going to be responding to the call. Again, there's options for that. We can work with them. We can test that. But as I stand here tonight, I'm not 100% convinced that that will be the answer to our problem, to the changes that need to be made. And because of that, I cannot stand here and endorse the consolidation. That doesn't mean that six months or eight months from now, I can stand here and say, "Hey, we've got it figured out. No problem, let's do it." But right now, I'm not 100% convinced we can do that. Now, to your point, Ben, I've looked at what other services in the county do. I've looked at all of the paramedic services in the county, even surrounding area. They have full-time staff members. They have people sitting onsite, waiting for a call. When a call comes in, they usually take turns. If there's a four-person staff staffing two ambulances, one will say, "You had the last call, take it." All they need is one page tone. Simple. If another page comes in, the very same page tone, this crew knows that that crew's gone, second crew takes that call. That requires four people onsite 24/7, 365. For every one 24/7, 365 person, I need to hire 4.5 staff members. That's without accounting for vacation, holidays, or anything else. I'd have to hire 18 full-time staff members in order to send out two ambulance crews. That would give you an annual cost of between 3.6 and $4 million with insurance and everything else. 18 full-time staff members. I don't think I could find 18 full-time staff members to do that. There are other options. If we can't do it municipally, maybe the city would like to go to a private ambulance service. Bring in a private service, and the city of Wapon pays LifeStar $66,000 a year to staff an ambulance or two in their city. They share no profits from that. It's a straight charge. If we can't do it, that's another option. Again, I don't like, you know, these options aren't to my liking, but I want you to know that I've explored them, I've looked at them. And in, just in closing, again, if I was completely convinced that we would absolutely always get an ambulance out the door by keeping my volunteer staff, I would have no opposition at all to the consolidation. So with that, anybody else?
Thank you for that additional information, and it sounds as though you're still exploring what the options look like for calling it out. Because again, at this point, if we were to consolidate with the county, it's about where that call comes in, where it's, many times, it's already calling in from a 911 call, and just it's a way it's being paged out. So theoretically, in the best-case scenario, which I know that we don't know that this would happen, your staff could stay the same, perhaps. I mean, it sounds like it may not, but let's go with that it can't stay the same and we need more personnel. If I'm understanding this decision right, with the amount that we would have to take on, if we were to keep our dispatch center here, and the liability additions, how things would change, it sounds like we're taking in more calls from outside the city also, and just fundamentally, how that would change, maybe even having to hire a supervisor to oversee it so that our chief can actually be the chief. It sounds like for this, we're still, we still have the same amount of emergency services, whereas if we were to move, and let's say we need more emergency personnel, we now have more emergency personnel to service our city. So in that scenario, it seems like it still makes sense to move because now we're getting more emergency personnel, and now we're increasing emergency personnel for our city. It'll still be hard to find the funds for that, I think, it sounds like, because again, that's not funded right now, but the cost in the end, we may come out similar, and now we have more emergency personnel in the city, which sounds like a win-win, unless I'm not seeing that. I guess there's so much unknown, I guess specifics until you work that out.
And Chief Wallner very correctly addressed the liability issue. I totally get that. Lud very eloquently spoke of a standard of care when we're dealing with the potential for negligence. My concern, and I have to operate under a standard of care, Lud learned this long before I did, but the other concern that I have is another point in which negligence, you could be charged with negligence, and that's called a duty to act. Fond du Lac County can take a 911 call. They do it a lot, and they do it very well. They can send out a page. They do that a lot. They do it very well. And then they have to make sure that whatever emergency vehicle is going to the call, they do that a lot and they do it very well. And when it's, when they don't see an emergency vehicle going to that call, they have an alternate, they have another plan, they'll call another service. My job, under the duty to act, is to make sure that when that page is received by us, that that ambulance is properly staffed and that it gets out the door. We've been very fortunate. For many, many years, we have a system here that assures us of that happening. Yes, sometimes mistakes are made, but very rarely. Once again, I don't want people to think that I'm totally opposed to change because I'm more than willing to explore other options for making sure that ambulance gets out the door. That's my duty to act, that's my responsibility. I have a tried and true system. I've had it for many years. Going through a different system is hard, and it's an unknown. And again, if I knew when I was 100% convinced that any of the changes that may be proposed, I'd gladly stand here and endorse the consolidation, but until I know that we have something that's going to work, I, again, I'm looking out for my department, I still have to oppose it.
John, you said that you would have to have a, kind of like a trial scenario where, like, you got to do some testing with the county and whatnot. How long would that take?
The process would be first, first thing I'd have to do is order a dozen pagers. That's about $600 a piece. Again, not a big fiscal thing for our department. They have to be programmable pagers. I already have a dozen or so. Over the years, we've been replacing them with programmable pagers. That's not, that's not really a problem. Alderman Wurch at one of the meetings, very correctly, and I hadn't even thought of that, is what kind of time would it take for us to get a dozen pagers in this day and age when technology, some equipment is hard to get because it hasn't been, people haven't been manufacturing it? So first thing I would do tomorrow is check with our vendor, get a lead time for a dozen pagers. Once the pagers are received, I'd have to program them all. Again, not a problem, I have the equipment, I have the know-how, I have the software to do that. Don't see that as an obstacle either. And after the equipment is acquired, work with the communications officer, and they've offered us three pages, and experiment with how three pages, instead of 36 pages, how we can get out the door with three pages, rather than the 36 that we got out with now. And there, you know, if option A doesn't work, we can try option B, and if option B doesn't work, we can try option C. And if option C doesn't work, and we're kind of out of options, then I'm stuck trying to find an, trying to find and get that ambulance out the door. I don't want to sound negative against Fond du Lac County. Bobby and Aaron Jared both gave me very good suggestions. They have many, many years in communications. They know what they're doing. They've looked at our unique situation here, and they've offered some good suggestions. And I think, and I totally agree, that it's worth exploring and trying them. But until it's a tried and true and proven procedure, I have, I'm just having trouble with that, until we know for sure. So it's a tough choice.
I want to make sure I support you because you're important to our city, John. I want to just share something that we've received, and I want to make sure if I'm understanding, because this helps to make, to share why I'm making the decision I made last time for the vote, and I want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. That, as I understand it, recently, the state of Wisconsin required dispatch centers to provide pre-arrival CPR instructions to callers who are requesting an ambulance for a patient. And the city of Ripon dispatchers are not certified emergency medical dispatchers, so at this time, we cannot comply with this requirement in-house. And my understanding is this is why Ripon dispatchers must get the necessary information to find out what is happening and where, and then they transfer the call to the Fond du Lac center. The Ripon dispatcher then explains to the Fond du Lac County dispatcher the nature of the call and completes the transfer. It is only then that the Ripon dispatcher can page out an ambulance, and then here's what we were given, and so I want to make sure if this is correct. We have heard from the Ripon paramedics that they have concerns about what a delayed response has on patient care and final outcome. Paramedics mentioned that the faster hands-on chest are better for a patient's recovery. The current system, the current system that we have in Ripon, and that if we choose to stay here, we would keep, it says here, "undeniably delays this response." And so for me, that's not acceptable, and even if we choose to upgrade it, this statement of delaying our response would still stand, whereas it goes on to say that at the Fond du Lac dispatch, if the call is received there initially, one dispatcher would be paging an ambulance and first responders immediately, while another would be providing CPR and pre-arrival medical instructions. And it says here, "This would result on hands-on chest within seconds of the 911 call being received." It seems safer. Am I understanding, is there anything on what I just shared that we received that's misunderstanding that?
Well, first, again, and Chief Wallner said he was going to stay in his lane, or that document that you're reading that from was not created by me.
Got it.
Was, and Bill, if you would want to step up and address.
I didn't mean to create anything like that. I'm just, this helps me make my decision.
Yeah. And from the EMS point of view, it is important to start CPR as soon as possible, and very often, as recently, well, I shouldn't say that, but very often, when we arrive on the scene, if we have somebody who's not breathing and doesn't have a pulse, they are being coached by Fond du Lac County, by communications officer in Fond du Lac County with CPR instructions. Not only that, it's not, and it's not only CPR instructions, very often, when we arrive at a call, the communications officer in Fond du Lac is still on the phone with the patient, especially if the patient is alone. So they are doing their due diligence. They do a wonderful job for us. They can provide some basic first aid suggestions and advice. And don't get me wrong, that's wonderful, that's a great improvement to the system that we have. But as far as comments by paramedics that I think were taken in a comment session at a meeting, that is not anything that I drafted, and if, you know, as long as it's referring to the communications center, I would suggest if Bill wants to address it, that he does so.
Well, I have a concern now that it sounds like currently, there's a system that you use that to do anything different, we don't have the technology for in paging systems and everything. It just seems like it's such a specific system that if something were to happen and we didn't have, we didn't have you available, or we didn't, a system went down, it seems like it, from what it sounds like, we're kind of out of luck, because it seems like it's not something that could be compatible with other systems, and that's a concern, whether we transition or not. It seems that to have something so specific to the way that Ripon EMS operates, to me, it sounds like a liability, that, you know, it's basically, you know, more or less controlled by a small amount of, you know, knowledge, information, and familiarity with the system.
Yeah, and that's the nice thing about our current communications center, is we're only dispatching for Ripon Police, Ripon Fire, and Ripon EMS. So while Fond du Lac County can offer a whole lot more, and I totally agree with that, we can offer, as far as the EMS is concerned, customization into who gets paged. And with a volunteer organization such as we have, that customization is very important to our staff, and getting that ambulance out the door, and being able to page two people who are on-call to staff that ambulance, and paging the right two people based on where they are on the schedule.
But is it safe to have something that's so customized that it doesn't adapt well to external systems? That's, you know, that just seems like.
My best answer to that, Paige, is we've been, our ambulance service has never been sued in the 15 years I've been in charge of the service. Never been questioned about liability for the way we get people out the door. Never, in the past five years plus, have we needed mutual aid because we missed a page or we didn't have an ambulance available. So can something happen tonight or tomorrow? That would shoot a hole in my argument, sure. Could our paging system go down? Yes. We do have redundancy in our paging system? Could that system go down? Could a tornado come through the city and knock down all of our towers and we're sunk? We actually have redundancy for that. We actually have a third option. If all of our paging towers were knocked out, we would start making phone calls and bring our crews to the station. So if 911 call came in, or a page was needed, or a radio, a portable radio, if necessary, transmission needed to be made, we would do that. So we, over the years, we've tried to cover any potential problems and reduce that risk by creating redundant systems for what we do.
Thank you for that clarification.
But as a follow-up to Paige's question, at the city of Ripon, do we have someone that works on our technology? As I understand it, isn't there someone at the county, perhaps the folks in the county that are here can help us understand this, if there is a technology issue, if something goes down, we all know, we live in an age where there's more hackers, technology, as we move in the future, is going to get more complicated. Isn't there someone at the county that, it's a paid position that supports that? And who do we have here? Who supports our technology if it were to go down? Who is that position?
It's not an internal position, we outsource.
So additional cost and time to find someone that understands where, what is the situation at the county? Is there someone at the county, if something goes down with emergency services, whether in the squad car or the communications center, what does that process look like? Thanks for being willing to come up with the answer.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Yes, in the county, we have IT, our information technology, they oversee all of our computers. We also, as part of our maintenance agreements with our phone system, with our CAD RMS, our computer-aided dispatch RMS, we have contracts with those providers and have 24/7 coverage on it. I am very well-versed in our CAD system, and as far as like redundancies too, we have the exact same thing that John was talking about, Chief Teachout was talking about, as far as if our, we have several layers in place with phone redundancies, with the radio redundancies also, all the way to we page out, we send a phone call to every chief in Fond du Lac County, fire EMS, first responders, and law enforcement, and tell them, "Our radios are down, you need to stand by your phone." So we have all of that, but yes, it is just, it's a phone call and we get that addressed right away, but we have the backup center and all of that also.
Just to be clear, that's in-house and that's readily accessible? I mean, that's a county employee that is on the call?
Yes, our IT system can be dialed into our system in no time. I can dial into our system if we had a problem right now. I can dial into our system if we had a problem right now in the middle of this meeting, I could dial into our system and start troubleshooting our computer system, so, yes.
Question for you.
Yes.
I assume the county works with other volunteer paramedic services?
Yes, volunteer services, yes.
Yes, yes. And from my readings, from the original timeline, the EMS was going to be the last department to change, is that correct?
We can do anything. As I said in our meeting that we had last week, seems like forever ago, we would figure that out and determine, the big thing that I would do if the vote were yes, what we would be doing is sitting down, all of us, the chiefs, myself, and figuring out who needs the most time to get things done. We would create a timeline for that, and we would have identified milestones. And in looking at that, if EMS had 10 milestones that we had to hit in order to do that, then yes, that would make the most sense to have them be the last. I would assume that they have the most adjustment. I know police, police and fire are going to have adjustments also. Without sitting down and putting that timeline together, I would not be able to say yes, definitely, but if that's what was identified, we would definitely do it.
And your original timeline had, I believe it was September 1st for when your, all your equipment's going to be installed and up and running, so that would be the optimal time to be converted by?
Yes, the fall/winter of 2021, yes.
That would leave us eight months to find a paging system that will work.
Correct. And in our conversation last week, as you talked about with the different options, and as Chief Teachout said, you know, Plan A doesn't work, we look at Plan B, I say, we go to Z, we go to Z1, Z2, whatever it takes to make it work. I feel very confident we can come up with solutions. We had a two-hour meeting that day, and I learned more of the concerns, it was probably the best conversation Chief Teachout and I have had as far as what his concerns are. And those were my spitball recommendations, based on what those needs were. I feel very confident, I would not stand in front of this committee if I did not feel we could accommodate what needs to happen. I understood his concerns, and as he said, we talked about implementing these changes and having those backups in place. I would never, ever make a recommendation to make a change and just see how it goes. There would be backups in place. We make sure that we have the redundancies, and we would start that immediately. This is something that we would work on, but I do not, I feel very strongly that this isn't something that we see if we can come up with a solution and then decide to move forward, because now we have cut into that eight months that you were talking about, and it's not going to, we're not going to have enough time, so other things are going to get rushed, missed, or it's not going to work. So that would be my concern.
And I would assume that with your personal experience, or with other people in similar dispatch centers, there's probably already a solution somewhere out there. We wouldn't necessarily have to reinvent the wheel to solve our problem.
Absolutely. While there are unique things, that Ripon, the paging is something that I'm not aware of anyone else doing, their needs and their staffing and their schedule is not that unique, as far as they have four to six people scheduled in a day. We make sure we get notification to those people. Then we start looking at the anomalies. So we look at the basics, how do the basics work? This is how we do it. Now, what happens when there's a call at 3:45 and shift change is at 4:00? What does that look like? How often does that happen, and what do we do when that happens? Those are all things that take time. I don't, it would be wonderful if in that eight months, when everything went over, we had everything worked out. But we continuously improve and change things as things adjust. I can say, in North Fond du Lac, they've made big changes, and three months ago, we changed the way we were paging for them because of some operational changes they make. So this isn't even a, we come to a conclusion, we, this works and this is how Ripon's going to have it forever. We adjust to what is needed, and we want to make it work, we want to ensure we get the responders going. As Chief Teachout said, we do watch that very carefully and make sure that we have a responder going. That is a very important thing for us, and we have a timeline for it. And that's because we need to make sure we're getting help where it needs to go. We take that very seriously.
Thank you.
I want to add, you mentioned North Fond du Lac, and in my personal phone calls and in emails that you saw with North Fond du Lac Police Chief, he was very complimentary working with you, Bob. That was incredible to hear, and I want to go back to what you just said, that you continually update. And Paige, you said this so well last meeting, you brought up the fact that even if we do decide to stay here, the cost of continually updating will only, will then fall only on the residents of Ripon versus being shared with the entire county. And you just mentioned that, it sounds like you are continually looking at updating. And I can only imagine, you know, you already talked about the texting ability, perhaps it won't be that long, but video technology.
It's coming.
And so here we have a chance to share that with the entire community. In fact, we have a Ripon resident who apparently helped to install the system at the county, Ellen Sorensen.
Yes.
Who also talked about there are things such as when, our address is brought up right now at the county, there can be things such as, are there any warrants, then perhaps a number of guns that are registered to that household, that apparently we currently don't have the technology for. So there's some safety features. Again, as we talk about continual updates, it's really neat to see that the county will be continuing to update that, as you've proven that you've done in the past.
Yes. And just to be clear, that technology is available to Ripon, but it's not as convenient. That's, that's.
But not as convenient.
Yes, it's, I can go in and make a change quick, that kind of thing. So that technology, the specific address-location information is available, I don't want to misrepresent that at all.
Neither do I, neither do I. Can you quickly state for the public, again, I know you haven't in the past, that our, if we were to move to the county, that our current dispatchers, who mean so much to us, that they, that you have said that they are welcome to an interview process with you and to be considered? Can you state that again?
Absolutely. Any dispatcher, even, so we have vacancies, we are not currently hiring, we are not accepting applications. However, if there was a Ripon dispatcher that wanted to come through, we would have them go through the entire process. So what we normally do is we look at an application and decide if they move forward, then we go to the next step. We would put them through that entire process. We would not exclude them. Look at that big picture, and our hope would be, we'd want to hire that person because they're going to come with experience, and they know our current system, and it definitely is something that's a benefit. I just cannot guarantee that, because we do have the certain thresholds that we have to meet with our testing, that we have established with other people that we either hire or don't hire.
But you'd be hiring more if we go over, because you'd have higher needs?
Yes, yes, we would hire additional dispatchers, yes, we absolutely would, and if there was any, so, and as you talked about with the severance and all of that with the dispatchers. If any dispatchers came over, my expectation would be that they would stay with Ripon until the end, see that through, not desert it. And because of that, we would offer their seniority to freeze immediately when we offered them the job, so they're not punished for staying over, because we do want that. I'd love to have them over sooner, but it makes absolutely no sense to take them from you. So that would be a benefit we would provide them to ensure that they stay with and they don't lose. If we hire five people between when we offer that person and they would come over, they would have seniority over those five people.
I don't want to keep asking because, again, but I also don't want to leave anything left unturned, and that was a lesson I learned last time. And I will just say that, so if we have to pay for this, Lori, can you explain a little bit more, when we talk about payment, how the levy works, and how, it's not necessarily, can you explain in your words, how if we were to move to the county, how our funds work for that, with the levy and paying for the 200,000? I'd like, can you please share that?
Well, basically, our levy would go down by $200,000, so residents would see that as a decrease on their tax bill. The county would be allowed to increase their levy by $200,000. All residents of the county would see an increase on their tax bill, so it would be shared with the whole county. Does that make sense to you?
Well, but in other than that current situation, it means that we're not going to our departments to ask them to cut. So if we were to move to the county, we are not, we're not taking, it's in essence, I don't know how to say this, you know, it's paid for, I don't know if that's a correct, I don't want to mislead anything here, but we're not trying to find our next budget ways to pay for this. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct, because we wouldn't have the cost of the dispatch center.
Exactly. So I just want to be sure. And on that note, you know, if we were to have to find funds, for example, I think of the Department of Public Works. Let's say, for example, they had to find a way to cut staff, as I understand it, and we can ask, I think every single staffer currently, for example, it's winter in Wisconsin, is being utilized for snow removal. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if we were to cut someone, we now have less, someone less to.
Provide service.
Provide service cleaning our roads, and now we have that issue to think about safety of our roads in the winter.
Correct.
Are there any further discussion or questions?
I'll make the motion to start the process to move to this patch there.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Dave, seconded by Paige. Any further discussion on the motion?
I would like to echo Chief Wallner's comments about change. I said it before, the last meeting, I'll say against night, I'll echo his statements of change. None of us agree, none of us like it, but some things are inevitable of change. We need all these open to those change, we all need to understand it's not just the county changing, we'll need to change as well. We'll get to city level, EMS level, fire department, police. Everybody's going to need to change and to possibly put a little more onto themselves of how they do things going forward. We can't predict the future, obviously, we're going to do the best we can. All changes have always happened, good or bad, and then we learn from them and then we move on. To say something's going to be tried and true before we do it, we're always trying new systems. But I disagree, unfortunately, John's comments on that, that we're always trying new systems, we're always trying different things, you know, and that's the point of it. We have eight months to get it to the right level, to hopefully work with the EMS crew and the county folks. Potential full-time employees at EMS? I don't think I see that right now, no. Obviously, who knows, five years from now, it could happen if we stay here. Again, I think that's an independent conversation, and I don't think we need to be a part of it. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Jim. And I would just like to say that the obvious financial benefit and just as obvious safety benefit of switching to the county for dispatch does not outweigh the difficulties that it will be to change a scheduling system that will be difficult to change. I agree, but it is something that can be overcome, and I'm confident that it can be overcome within that eight-month window. So I'm wholeheartedly putting my support behind this change. Is there any further discussion on this topic? John?
If this does go to Fond du Lac County, I would like the city to be very transparent on the actual cost of what the transfer is, the cost savings versus the cost, you know, deficit. I just want to have the citizens of Ripon to be, have an honest answer if it is a true cost savings, or if it's going to be a cost burden to the city. So transparency to me would be the best thing on that.
I would hope they would be transparent about all the budgeting issues.
Excellent, thank you.
By "they," I mean us. Thank you, John. Any further discussion? Once again, any further discussion? And last time, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a roll call vote for the motion to consolidate Dispatch Center with Fond du Lac County. Lori?
Certainly. Mr. Schrader.
Aye.
Mrs. Schatzinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Gallups.
Yes.
Mrs. Kane.
Yes.
Mr. Morrison.
No.
Mr. Wirth.
Yes.
Mr. Split.
No.
Motion carries six to two.
Thank you. Moving on. We have a resolution on carrying over funds from the 2020 budget to the 2021 budget?
Moved to approve.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of carrying forward the funds to the 2021 budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Next item is authorizing the extension of TID 4 for one year. I will start this discussion with Lori, if you want to give a summary on this one.
Sure. When a TID closes, the state allows the municipality to keep it open for one additional year, with the requirement that those funds are spent to benefit affordable housing in the community. So we did this with TID number one, we extended it one additional year, and that's how we created the Ripon Build and Ripon Renew programs. So I did take a look at TID 4, there is a memo in your packet about this. Closing TID 4 would add approximately $41,000 to our budget for 2022, if it was closed this year, and it would close on March 8th of 2021. So that would add $41,000 to next year's budget. It would also provide tax relief of $15.46 on a $100,000 home. So by keeping it open one extra year, we would defer that, we would push that back just one year, but instead, we would collect $273,000 that we could use to improve housing in our community. So we did have a subcommittee when we closed out TID 1 that investigated, you know, this whole, the options, and that was their recommendation at the time, was to always utilize the extension. It just makes sense. So that is the resolution that you have before you.
Thank you, Lori. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? Howie?
Lori, could you explain to the people that are listening where TID 4 is located?
TID 4 is the original industrial park, so the businesses, you know, that are out there, like Ripon Pickle, Creative Forming, or PolyOne, Advanced Paper, all of the businesses in the industrial park.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion on this resolution? Howie?
Lori, could you explain to the people that are listening where TID 4 is located?
TID 4 is the original industrial park, so the businesses, you know, that are out there, like Ripon Pickle, Creative Forming, or PolyOne, Advanced Paper, all of the businesses in the industrial park.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion on this resolution? Go ahead, Jim.
Lori, do we have to take this like we've had with other times of sharing this stuff? We have to take this back to the school, county, so on and so forth, to get permission for this one here, essentially?
No, Joint Review Board approval is not required for this.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the resolution to authorize the extension of TID 4 for one year?
Jim?
Second.
Moved by Jim, seconded by Al. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of authorizing the extension of TID 4 for one year, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Next item is the city's three-year agreement with Grand Valley Inspection Services. This is for the building inspector and zoning administration. The contract is up for renewal this year, and this would be for an extension of three years. Any discussion on this topic? John?
I'd just like to say that the Susan Leahy, the lady that is the owner of that company, does a wonderful job. She's very personable, and I have not heard any complaints really from any contractors. So that's-
I would just like to also add that she's personable and knowledgeable.
Yes.
She's very knowledgeable. Very good at her job.
Yes.
I would certainly recommend this extension. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the extension of the Grand Valley Inspection Services contract, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? All right, next item is coming from Public Works Committee. It is, let's see here, which one's first? The approval process for distributing the 2021 free dump day tickets. Al, would you like to start that one?
Certainly, at our last Public Works Committee meeting, I believe last week, we, we finalized in discussions with Mike, a, a program whereby residents could pick up a free ticket that would allow them to drop larger items at the dump site. The tickets, they could, the tickets are available to each resident homeowner of the city. Consequently, they could go to the Public Works Office, pick up that ticket, they would need, you know, proof of residency, whatever. Those tickets then would, you can take a pickup truck load, a four-by-eight trailer load in, give the ticket to the attendant at the, at the recycling center, and go from there. In the event that I have a pickup truck, I want to haul it for Jolene because she doesn't have a pickup truck, Jolene simply comes in the truck and presents her ticket, and we're able to accommodate it that way. This will keep down labor costs, tipping fees, we won't deluge the recycling centers on a couple of Saturdays and a couple of Tuesdays with massive amounts of people dropping off things. It just seems like a very, very good system and something that would meet our goals to make an opportunity available for residents to get rid of some things each and every year. Tickets that are not used in a given year cannot be carried over. They expire, you would have to get another one the following year. So, Mike, or any of the committee members, what did I miss?
I do have a question, you might have mentioned it, but I might have missed it. How are those going to be distributed?
They, residents can pick them up at the Public Works Office.
Thank you. John?
Is there any thought on rental properties and/or short-term rentals like an Airbnb? I mean, they're owned by a private person, that person pays the tax on it, does that person get a ticket for that? I mean, I'd say, just for instance-
Who pays the utility bill, John?
Well, it depends on if it's a short-term rental.
You pay the utility.
I pay the utility. If it's a, if it's a long-term rental, they pay the utilities.
Then if they pay the utility bill, it would be their ticket.
Okay.
If you pay the utility bill, it's your ticket.
Okay, so then I'd have to, to prove ownership, bring down-
The utility bill.
Okay. That's all, okay.
Yep. Are we, you know, we, just to add on what Al said, it is, met with the team at Public Works and how can we resolve some of the issues that we've seen all day, and still provide a service to residents? The beauty of this is it's all year round. So if somebody moves out, okay, they can bring their stuff there, okay? If somebody moves in and they're doing, got the utility bill, they can bring their stuff there too. So it, it, it just fully encompasses people moving in and out. So if you got a renter that moves out and they bring the utility bill, they can bring their stuff out there. Then you have a next one come in, right?
Mm-hmm.
They're paying the utility bill and they just need to get rid of some things, they bring it out, okay?
Mm-hmm. I'm just trying to think of-
There's probably going to be something out there, John.
Draw that.
I guarantee you.
Because I get some renters that leave a mess.
But here's an opportunity.
And they might have used, yeah, I understand that. That's a, that's a chance you take.
Yep.
It's, it's, I'm glad this program started.
Well, we felt that they're just, the two days or four days was just too expensive.
Yeah.
From a labor standpoint. So how can we put something together that really helps everybody out in the community?
I do have one question on this scenario, particularly for like downtown businesses where it's commercial. I assume this is just applying to residential?
It does apply to residential.
What about the apartments above some of those commercial spaces?
That would be residential if they're paying the utility bill, they would bring that to Public Works and a ticket issued.
But I know some of them have, they share water, so the commercial space is paying-
There's one of those things that, you know, I guess-
That's just something that wouldn't be covered.
It can happen, and we're going to find things-
Yeah, there's going to be glitches.
Out there, we can think of every scenario, so we're going to have to figure out-
Something to work, that would be something to work on for future years.
Something, yes.
Okay.
When you mean, when you mean a utility bill?
Water.
Water, let's make that clear, because somebody could say, here's my power bill. That's a utility. We want to make that clear.
Water bill.
You know, that is-
City of Ripon utility bill.
Correct.
Okay. Excellent clarification.
Yeah.
And it's a live document, so, you know, if we continue this going forward, we'll adjust.
Very good.
One other thing, if somebody were to, if one trailer load was not quite enough and they had four other items or whatever, could they purchase an additional, or is that not an option?
There's always that option to purchase other tickets to accommodate those. Got 65 mattresses and they don't fill up a four-by-eight trailer, you can purchase a ticket for each.
Okay. So your, your current system remains in place?
Use the current system that we have, yep.
Okay.
You know, if, if Al wants to haul stuff away and put some of Jolene's stuff on there, he's got to use his ticket.
I already got plenty of what it is. Jolene's going through her head.
Yeah.
And so with this coming out of committee, do we, is it its own motion, or do we need to make a separate motion here?
Make a separate motion.
Okay.
Committee recommends approval.
Motion to establish it.
Is there a motion to establish this dump ticket program?
I'll make a motion to establish dump ticket program.
All right. Been moved by John and seconded by Ben. Any further discussion?
I want to give credit to the committee for doing this. I think it, quite frankly, thank you. It makes my job easier as a, as a representative, because people do ask about this, they, they missed it. And so thank you for being creative with this, sounds like a great solution. I don't, I, perhaps it's even worth a, a press release, because so many people ask about this or a story in the paper. I'll just throw that out there, so thank you to the committee.
Mike's idea?
Yes, thank you, Mike.
He just vetted it.
Public Works Team's idea of a public dissection.
Well, we thank your entire department.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Two things, for number four dot three dot one, are we going to- Is that then the recent utility bill, the recent water bill?
Yes. Next.
From the government bills presented?
Get there.
All right, so changing four dot three dot one to a City of Ripon utility bill, or?
City of Ripon utility bill, and in parentheses, water bill.
Water slash sewer.
Yeah, water slash sewer, very good.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then consider the possibility for those situations where water is included, possibly a lease, a signed lease agreement?
Exactly.
Okay.
And that would be a consideration for Public Works Committee to discuss at a later time? So not in this document?
Right.
And that plays down.
Sorry, it was on my mind, and I thought I'd throw it out, but that's not the motion.
Very good. You have more, Jim?
Yeah, two things. One, gratitude for Mike, obviously, this is something we need to work on and go forward. I know I've talked to you all fine about it, but gratitude to make sure it's making sense to the people, because right now, obviously, COVID situations like that, I can think of even like my mother, I'm not going to send her down by you to get a ticket, she's not bringing it up, but obviously, I'm going to. So some, you know, obviously, we have to verify where they are and how. It's not transferring, we're going to make sense to the people, you know, to the public. Help us help you too, so use this system so we can have execution.
Very good. And you had another point?
No, Al, you know, just again, this is something we're trying, I was going to try to make the work for the citizens and bring this back, but let's make sure we're going to the right way so that we can continue in the future.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to institute the dump ticket policy? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Thank you for your hard work on that one. Moving on, we have another one from the Public Works Committee, it looks like, establishing an equipment replacement fund with, for, from the annual recycling fee revenues. Al, do you want to start that one again?
Yeah, we, we looked at a resolution that dedicates a minimum of 75% of the recycling fees annually be placed in equipment replacement fund. Definition of equipment, that could be purchased in this fund, $10,000 minimum cost for items that would be depreciated over a seven-year period. The request should be brought through the annual budget process when possible, and expenditures would need to be approved by the Public Works Committee, who would then refer them to the common council for approval. There you are.
Thank you. Is it-
And the committee recommends approval.
Jim, could you repeat that?
Can you, can you explain to the public what 75% of is? So 75% of the recycling fee, what dollar amount would you hopefully be putting away that every year?
Probably looking at about $75,000 annually, plus or minus a thousand or two.
Give or take, give or take a few thousand, yes. I, I believe-
Kind of here in the numbers, we're not talking, you know, seven hundred bucks, we're talking major money.
Yeah, I believe last year's number for the total recycling fee was 102,000, or just over 100,000. So it would be just over 75,000 for this year's budget. Here? John?
Before we, we charge the citizens for this, where did the money for the recycling fee or a cost come from? Did it come from the general fund? Did it come from Public Works budget?
Lori?
It was from, now we have a separate fund for recycling. Prior to that, I'm not sure if it came out of the, I'm not sure, like, which line item it was, it was in the Public Works budget, but I'm not sure.
It was in the Public Works budget?
It was in the, okay, because I was just questioning why, why the 75% goes to Public Works. If it was out of the general fund, maybe not so much goes to Public Works, but if it was always in the budget for Public Works, okay.
Still in that budget.
Okay.
But it's a segregated account, John.
Okay.
It's not in the operating budget of the Public Works Department or anything like that, it's a segregated account, though consequently.
Okay.
That's why there were some parameters that needed to be placed on it, because we did set aside some for equipment replacement. We also used some things for non-cap, or cap, non-capital purchases that were necessary, replacing it with capital purchases in, in the budget last year, so.
And just a point of clarification, the fund can be used for other departments, but it would need to be approved by Public Works Committee.
And then the council has final approval.
Correct. So it's not limiting the funds just to Public Works?
No.
They just have some save. Very good.
It'll be in a segregated capital improvement fund, I mean, equipment fund, capital equipment is where the money's going.
Yes.
So it's going to be in an account intended to be used for equipment.
Yes.
Just for clarification, the public can't raid it and take it someplace else, it's got to stay in the concept of equipment. And Public Works could sign off to some other department, but it's equipment.
Yes.
Thank you.
John?
$75,000 or roughly is a lot of money, the 75% of that, how did we come up with that much to save? Is it just a number we thought of, or are we, do we have a goal we're shooting for, something we're shooting for?
Well, 75, when you look at capital equipment and large item per, 75,000 is not a whole lot of money.
Right.
You're looking at a $450,000 garbage truck or anything along those lines. But whether it's, you know, we needed to start to put some money aside, and this is not an opport, you know, we used about 22, 23,000 creatively in the last budget, and that's kind of where that number was plucked out of. But we need to start putting some money away for these future capital equipment purchases. And this was an opportunity to do so. Personally, it's also not, you always tried to avoid the opportunity for a money grab from somewhere, well, we want to grab, no, I'm sorry, we could, there's 25 available, but it's not, you know, free-for-all, you know, and those things. So this, this idea kind of segregated it out and, and moved us forward in many areas, so. It, it played out well in this budget. People got things that they wouldn't have gotten in the budget because we were creatively able to use these funds and still set some aside, so.
Just, what I just want to, just check, lost track, have we gotten a motion on this item already, or we still just discussed?
I don't think so, I don't think so. We're in discussion.
Okay. There was a lot of motions.
Yeah, there have been a lot.
All right, go ahead, Jolene.
So on that note, as far as needing a motion, if it worked out well in the current budget, help me understand why it's, it's, we, we could just keep it the same, but this is safeguarding it, I guess?
Well, this ensures that you're going to stick to your guns and, and put money away for future capital purchases. Yeah, you can't, you can't chop the nose off of it and dump it out, you know, and those type of things. Makes us do it.
Okay.
And, oh.
One last thing, because I, probably this constituent is watching right now, and I don't know if this is appropriate time to say it, but they would like to see a discussion about if there could be, if, if someone doesn't utilize recycling as often as when it, when it comes right now, if they could be on a, you know, are there different levels of schedules of when recycling, for example, or garbage is picked up? So again, I'm not sure that that's appropriate here, but I want it to be said that I have a constituent that would like us to consider that, and I don't know the history of, if that has been considered or anything like that, so.
And usually, I usually hear the exact opposite comment, we need more recycling. Any further discussion on this item, or any motions that want to be made? It's been moved by Jim, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution to establish the equipment replacement fund, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. On to discussion items. First item is the Russell Manor land contract. Lori, could you give us some history?
Oh, sure. There is a memo in your packet that explains a little bit how the city came to own Russell Manor. It, it was constructed on land that was donated to the city with the requirement that after the HUD, the 40-year HUD loan was- It, it was constructed on land that was donated to the city with the requirement that after the HUD, the forty-year HUD loan was paid off, it would come back to the city. So that happened about ten years ago, there was a subcommittee formed and looked into the different options, and the option that was decided upon was to sell the, the building on land contract back to the Russell Manor Board of Directors. So the land contract was for ten years, um, payments are three thousand dollars a month, it's a one-point-three-eight percent interest rate. And so we're looking at that coming up for renewal this year, and, um, our recommendation is to keep, uh, the same terms for the land contract and renew it for another ten years. They've been excellent, um, as far as their payment history.
Lori? Are we looking for a motion to approve the extension tonight, or is this?
Yes, yes.
Would so move to extend the land contract?
Second.
By Ben, seconded by Howie, any discussion?
Just one note for everybody here, I apologize for the inclusion of Ralph Quinney on the draft, it's been redrafted. It is, um, Mr. Worse that is now the president of Russell Manor, so I apologize, but I just ran through the last contract we did, his name popped up and we didn't catch it, so.
Any discussion on this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of extending the land contract for Russell Manor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That is.
Abstain, one abstention.
One abstention. That is approved. All right, next item is discussion on the Haas Brewery Stable. This comes to us from the Historical Preservation Committee, John, would you like to start this one?
Sure. At our last meeting last month, we discussed the Haas Brewery Stable that's owned by the city, and we decided to start a Facebook page to promote the stable and try to sell it. I believe the city, it's always been for sale or possibly for sale, so, um, we're trying to bring awareness to it for people outside of Ripon or even in Ripon to possibly purchase it. And in the discussion, we came to the conclusion and the agreement that we wanted, if it is to be sold, that it is sold and remains on-site straddling the creek. And as far as we know, the research that has been done, it's the only barn slash stable that is over a creek in Wisconsin, and we would like to promote it that way and keep it that way. So that was our recommendation. Hopefully, the council can take it under consideration and, uh, give us approval or just a blessing that it can be sold that way.
So just a question for you, um, it's currently for sale to anyone that wants to do anything with it?
I believe so, and that would probably be a, Lori, better answer to it.
Yeah, i- it's not technically for sale, and I, and I think, Lud, we would need to take this to Plan Commission and have it declared surplus property before we could put it up for sale?
Yes, it just, I think what John's referencing is we're looking for somebody who wants to preserve it, whether it's a nonprofit or.
Yes.
Even a for-profit idea, and we, I know we've had it out there, but I think it is correct that it would run back through Plan Commission.
Okay.
Formalize the sale of it, and, and you're kind of bringing it to a head by bringing it forward tonight.
Can we promote it on, uh, Facebook then, that it is for sale before we have that Plan Commission permission?
I think it's safe to say that you can say that the city is considering.
Okay.
And that way you get it out there.
Add a word at that.
Considering that it'll be going through the process of Plan and Commission approval and ultimately back to this body.
Okay.
And then we could create some kind of resolution if this body is so inclined to adopt that it be sold, but require that it remain on-site. The physical structure would remain on-site.
Would we need a?
Would we do anything as far as putting something on Facebook to run it by you and make sure all the work?
Yep, yep, just in terms of how you're gonna put it out there, yep. Yeah, just give me a draft of, of what you're looking to put out there, but I, I like the idea we keep it moving. We're looking for anybody that can help us maintain it if we can, obviously. Yep, so I think you direct that it goes to Plan Commission, they can evaluate that idea of staying on-site as well and then make a recommendation back to this body. So a motion to send it to Plan.
And then there would be in the form of a resolution.
Yep.
Coming back to this body.
Coming back to common council and a resolution for.
Sounds good.
We need a motion to send it to.
Send it to Plan Commission.
So move.
Okay.
Been moved by Al, seconded by Paige. Any discussion on the motion to send this topic to Plan Commission for further discussion?
I would just like to say we probably should wait up on listing anything, John, to get that Plan Commission and back to us. I don't think an extra week or two is gonna hurt.
No.
Draft up what you, draft up what you wanna put on, see this a lot, and then we can bring all that to common for, for approval at Plan does, cause then they have, you know, you have an idea of how you're gonna list it.
Sure, that's good, thank you.
I believe it would be a good idea to have that ready for Plan Commission before we discuss it. If you could draft that and.
Yes, it's in the works right now.
For the next Plan Commission meeting.
It's probably done right now.
All right, very good. Any further discussion on sending this to Plan Commission? Hearing none, all those in favor to send this topic to Plan Commission, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It'll be on the next Plan Commission agenda. Uh, next topic is coming from Cable TV Channel about a possible renaming. I will send this to Jolene to start the topic.
Sure, I'd love to share a little insight on this. Uh, since I've joined the Cable TV Advisory Committee, it has been really encouraging and inspiring to hear the connections that Riley and his team are, are making with, uh, the different various outlets that are doing, whether it's, you know, sports locally, music locally, programming, um, really a wide variety of ways that they're partnering with the school district, the college, um, and different places to provide this with the chamber. Of course, Jason, uh, uh, Mansmith from, from the chamber is a part of this committee, and they're partnering, uh, also creating stronger connections with other things like this. And so I bring this up because as we talk about all that we're doing and representing media, and we are really growing Whitney Mesa in the community and also really, uh, keeping track of our data as to who is now following our Facebook page, I would encourage if anyone's listening, go to the Ripon channel on Facebook, also follow us on, on YouTube, cause there's so many good programs. And so it's, quite frankly, even when I explain to people that I was, uh, you know, now a part of the Cable TV Advisory Committee, honestly, people would almost laugh at Cable TV, who watches Cable TV anymore? And so when we think about representing the city in the way it should be, it makes sense that, and this has been something we've been talking about for a long time, that we really are about the Ripon community media. So it seems to make sense that our, the name of our committee reflects what we are now about. Uh, I also think it makes, you know, someone's looking into the community to see what committees we have, it makes sense that this explains what we're about, if we're gonna attract new people to our committee, the name makes sense. Uh, and I will just add, because of the name Cable TV, when I actually looked at whether I wanted to keep my service for the Cable TV provider, I actually called and asked, can I still keep my, my local KV, cable channels? And they didn't know what I was talking about. So, I mean, so to even associate just with Cable TV only doesn't make sense. So our committee as a whole would like to recommend, uh, propose that we change this. It needs to be a motion, as I understand, cause it's part of an ordinance, the actual names of our committee. So that is why we are bringing this forward for consideration. I welcome any feedback.
Move to approve?
Second.
Third. So the motion is to rename the Cable TV Committee to the Ripon Community Media Committee.
Great.
That require an ordinance change?
It'll be an ordinance amendment, which I'll bring to the next meeting, if you approve it.
So this motion will direct you to bring that ordinance?
That's what the motion is, to bring an ordinance back.
All right, and that's, fits your understanding?
Absolutely.
Excellent. Uh, so it was moved by Al and seconded by Paige and third by Ben. Just have to say, I think it's awesome that as a committee, we can tell a lawyer what to do.
That was good, Ben, that was good.
All right, is there any further discussion on this topic? Hearing none, uh, the motion is to instruct the city attorney to bring an ordinance for renaming the Cable TV Committee to Ripon Community Media Committee. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Onto project updates and staff reports, Lori?
Yes, I have our employee anniversaries for both December and January. So we had six employees in December, Paul Albright in Public Works, two years, Brett Lynn at the wastewater treatment plant, three years, Chris Laveras, our utility manager, eight years, Dana Berry at the wastewater treatment plant, eight years, Jay Towne in the water department, twelve years, and Kelly Schmull in our police department, thirty years. So that was December, and they had quite a few in January. So we have Josh Reitz at the wa- wastewater treatment plant, two years, Lisa Malagic at Public Works, two years, Mike Aronberg at Public Works, three years, Desiree Bongers, our, at the library, sixteen years, Gordy Crump at Public Works, seventeen years, Officer Brett Hunning, Police Department, twenty-one years, Karen Engel in Administration, twenty-two years, Officer Gary Durkey, twenty-eight years, Tina Black in the Police Department, twenty-nine years, our Chief Wallner, thirty years, and Jean Ryzen at Public Works, thirty-six years. Lots of years.
Very good. Uh, Chief, do you have any other updates? No? Mike? No?
I wanna, but can, uh, Mike pass on to your crew the outstanding job they did with this past snowfall? Uh, it was one of the first ones that we've had of any substantial accumulation, and they did a great job cleaning and everything, and most of the people I spoke with in downtown were very happy with what was done. So pass that on to you guys, please.
I will pass that on, thank you very much.
Howie? All right, I don't really have much, uh, besides, uh, just watch out for COVID, it's still out there and the, uh, there's a couple new strains coming that are far worse than, uh, what we've seen, and hopefully we can all get vaccines before they become prevalent in our area. As always, uh, be safe, stay healthy, and remember to be kind, considerate, and respectful to others. Do any council members have any comments or future agenda items? Al?
I'd like to have a closed session. Item at the February ninth meeting regarding severance package for employees affected by moving dispatch operations to Fondlaw County.
Thank you. And just to note, um, keep an eye on your emails on the next day or two, we'll probably have to call a special closed session, possibly as early as the end of this week for another staffing issue. Any other comments or future agenda items? Hoping to get another email from you about gift cards.
Yeah. There are a lot of meetings lately.
I have gotten requests from myself.
I see lovely conversa- email conversations back and forth.
Be in favor. Okay, let's hear this. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Paige, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.